The March 3 meeting of Eden Prairie-
City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have open podium, an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on city issues. These council meetings are typically held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 roughly in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about this, please contact the city manager's office again, (949) 8412. We have, under proclamations and presentations tonight, a nice donation from Eden Prairie Smiles. Mr. Lothammer?
Your Honor, council members, this is a very nice donation from Eden Prairie Smiles, $5,000. They are a dentist firm in our city, and their contribution will be recognized at several of our events, one being Arts in the Park, also at the Hometown Celebration, July 3 and 4, Starring Lake Concert Series, Kidstock Concert Series, and Halloween on the Mall. And they'll be featured as a platinum sponsor at all of those events, but we're really grateful for their contribution. It'll really help with these events and the quality that we're able to bring to the community. So we want to acknowledge their gift and thank them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lothammer. It's really wonderful of Eden Prairie Smiles to give us that kind of money for five different events that we have and to give it to us at this point in the year so that we can do proper planning for some of those events that are as far out as the Halloween on the Mall event. But a lot of these events, as you said, wouldn't happen if we didn't get donations from the public, so this is a great donation, and I would like to entertain a motion to accept the donation.
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from Eden Prairie Smiles for $5,000 for Parks and Recreation special events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Anything to add or remove?
Just I have a brief item under Councilmember reports.
Okay.
Likewise.
And Mayor, I have an item to remove. We had a request from the developer associated with High Point at Riley Creek 2nd Edition. That's our first public hearing. We had mailed notice for that hearing, so we needed to keep it on the agenda, but the developer asked that we postpone this item as they work out details related to their subdivision project. So when we get to that item, when you approve this agenda, that would not include this item, and then we would not have that public hearing.
No, we'll be taking a vote on anything there.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesdays, February 17?
Move approval, second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held the same date?
Move approval, second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item here is the consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval of items on the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through H on the consent calendar.
Second.
Anything to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Brings us to our first public hearing, which is not going to be a public hearing, the High Point item that you brought up, Mr. Getchell. Did you want to say anything else about that?
No, it's not even on the agenda anymore.
Okay. Onto item B, which is a 2015 CDBG funding recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is an annual event where we make recommendations and hold a public hearing to deal with the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant funding that the city receives from the federal government. This is a pass-through funding that is used to fund projects in the city to the benefit of many residents and many social service projects. And the city's allocation for 2015 is $227 and $139, and there's a recommendation to fund seven programs with those dollars, which we've done typically in the past, the first being PROP, also the YMCA Child Care, the Home Program, which is the household and outside maintenance for the elderly program, the CAPS program for emergency vehicle repair, our housing rehabilitation program, and our other affordable and fair housing programs. So I see some of those agencies represented tonight, so we ask that you hold a public hearing and then consider the requests of the allocation for CDBG funding for these various projects this evening.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a lot of students in the audience too, so I would just like to say that CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grants, and this was legislation passed during Jerry Ford's administration, and it was very widely supported bipartisan support in Congress for adopting CDBG funding. And what it does is it takes funding that is intended for anti-poverty programs and affordable housing programs, and rather than, in a very formulaic way, having the federal government come down and say, "This is what you're going to spend the money for in your community," it gives us a certain amount of dollars that we can make a decision locally as to how those dollars are used. So it gives control to the local units of government. So, Mr. Getchell, the motion suggested here doesn't indicate anything about a public hearing. Should we add that?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council on the CDBG allocation? Thank you. If you could identify yourself and your agency, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members, and staff. My name is Deb Taylor. I am the CEO of Senior Community Services, and I'm here today representing our Home Program, Household and Outside Maintenance for Elderly. Imagine, you're 85 years old, you're sitting in your living room in your favorite chair, and you're watching the snow come down, and it's accumulating, and it's accumulating, and it's accumulating. Now, the scenario can go two different ways. One, you're stuck in your home, your Meals on Wheels driver can't even get to you for fear of falling because your driveway is full of snow, and your neighbors aren't very happy with you because you haven't shoveled your sidewalk. Scenario number two, the snow stops falling, you're looking out your window, and a senior community services worker is there shoveling your driveway, shoveling your steps, and shoveling your sidewalk. You're happy because now you can come and go, your Meals on Wheels driver can come and go, and your neighbors are happy, but if they had been good neighbors, perhaps, they would have helped you with the snow removal in the first place. Senior Community Services' vision is to mobilize the community to reimagine aging, and through the Home Program, we provide numerous services that help keep folks in their own homes, keep them independent, and help keep their housing stock up. We provide, in addition to snow removal, we do lawn mowing services, minor maintenance, we have house cleaning, grocery shopping, laundry, we do interior and exterior painting, and we also do spring and fall yard cleanup. The spring and fall yard cleanup is provided by volunteers. In our program, we have over 2,000 volunteers that provide that service. The other services are provided on a sliding fee scale based on the ability to pay, and that's what we use the CDBG funding for, is to fund the sliding fee scale for those that are low income. We've added two new items to the Home Program. One is that we have a home shop, so adult children of their loved ones can purchase two hours of house cleaning, or four hours of house cleaning, or handyman work, and give that as a gift to their loved one. And you can do that on our website, and it's through e-commerce. And the other item that we've added is in-home safety assessments. I was startled to learn that one out of three people over the age of 65 fall each and every year, and so one of the reasons they fall is because of their physical environment. So we continue to be innovative and meet the needs of seniors as our seniors continue to grow in our community, and we're going to be offering that service free of charge. And for those that are interested in that, that number's (952) 746-4046. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate hearing from you. How do you promote your services within the community? Just curious.
How do we promote them?
Yeah.
Well, that's been a big focus, a strategic focus for us. We've been the best-kept secret in town. We used to have a logo that sort of looked like a pack of cigarettes, and it had SCS underneath. We now have a beautiful logo and a new tagline, "Reimagine Aging," and so that's been helpful. We do, I do guest columns in the local ECM publications and local papers to kind of raise awareness about aging and caregiving issues, and also providing an option for services through Senior Community Services. We market through the churches, through the senior center, through local community events, advertising, a number of ways, and we partner with the city as well on referrals.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, just can we, or do we have links on our website to private organizations that we support with CDBG funds?
Councilmember Case, that's correct. We do devote some space on our website and updates that we put out to the community, to some of the social service agencies that we provide funding for. So not only our own in-house programs do we spend, we have to promote those ourselves, we do our best to also promote those programs as well, like PROP, like The Y, and HOME, through our own public relations channels or communication channels as well.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay.
Good evening. I want to take this opportunity first to just introduce myself. I'm Janet Palmer, the new Executive Director at PROP. I've been with the organization over seven years, mainly as the Operations Director, so I kind of know the ins and outs of the organization, as well I've been living in Eden Prairie for over 25 years, so you got somebody that kind of hopefully knows the ropes. I know we've had some personnel turnover at PROP, but I just want to assure the city that PROP is in great shape, strong, both financially, as far as our services, we haven't missed a beat, so things are ticking along just great. I want to thank you for considering us for the CDBG funds. Last year, we, just with these funds alone, were able to help 25 different families avoid homelessness. We also do a survey after the fact, after three months, and over 70% of these families were in their same home and were current on rent. So what we're able to do is really take these situations, a crisis situation, they're in a tough spot, help them, and really get them over the hump to stability, and that's something that PROP works very hard in, is not just taking care of a crisis, but we have wraparound services that really help work towards people, towards self-sufficiency. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jan, and congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
I hear great things about you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Bryce Caldwell. I'm representing the YMCA. With so many demands on today's families, parents need all the support they can get. That comes in our before and after care school programs, where we go into the schools that children attend, and our YMCA staff are there as early as 6:00 a.m. all the way up until the start of the school day. They attend their regular school day, and then our YMCA staff are there, again, all the way up until 6:00 p.m. We also provide full-day options for these families and childcare needs when school's not in session throughout the school year, as well as summer programs. And this is more than just looking after kids. It's nurturing their development. It's providing a safe place for them to develop healthy and trusting relationships. And also, it's a place where they can work on their homework, they can work on healthy living, they can have continual learning. Right now, we are serving 771 program participants. 269 of those are at Oak Point and Eagle Heights Elementary, which is a school that we did not serve last year, so our numbers are greatly increasing. Sometimes parents need more support, so we provide personal pricing plans and income-based availability for families. Last year, in 2014, we were able to provide $54,000 for this assistance, and this year it's going to be even greater with a goal of $67,000. So with that in consideration, we're hoping that you will consider our full request. It's been an honor representing the YMCA of the Greater Twin Cities, where we're for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. The Y has been a great partner with the city for years and years. When I moved here in '85, The Y was in our schools, helping with after-school daycare and making sure that everything was safe for our youth, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Christine Hart, and I'm a community developer at Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin, otherwise known as CAPS. And I want to thank you for allowing me to be here today, as well as supporting our longstanding relationship with the city of Eden Prairie. I also want to thank you for being one of the only communities in suburban Hennepin County who dedicates their CDBG funds to a car repair program. So a quick history of CAPS, we were funded in 1985, and we're the community action agency for all of suburban Hennepin County, and our programs include homeless and supportive services. We offer energy assistance, homeownership and financial stability services, food support, the list really goes on and on. For programs in 2013, 2014, we assisted 32,842 low-income households, and that impacted 94,057 individuals through all of our programs. And today, we're requesting continued funding to support the vehicle repair program, and CAPS has served as the fiscal agent in administering the Eden Prairie's Vehicle Repair Program since 2006. How the program works is CAPS, our clients refer to CAPS from Family Link, and the car repair program pays 75% of the repairs up to $750. The client, as a result, would be responsible for the balance. And residents are eligible once every three years, and the repairs qualify under safety or drivability of the vehicle. So we help with brakes, oil leaks, tires, anything under similar circumstance. Then we work with the pre-vendors who provide varying discounts for the repair services. So some of the community vendors that we're working with are Under Car Services, Modern Auto Care, and Terry's Automotive, to just name a few. And in 2014, we were able to serve 21 Eden Prairie households under this car repair program, 14 of whom were female-headed households with children. And between 2006, when we started this, to 2014, a total of 166 Eden Prairie households have been served under the Vehicle Car Repair Program, and all of the households served are below 80% AMI. So we really believe that this program is so important because without safe and reliable transportation, it's difficult for families to get to their jobs and school and get to childcare. So we really look forward to continuing serving residents of Eden Prairie, and thank you for letting me be here today.
Thank you, Christine. How long does this funding last, do? Do you go through this funding in six months, or does it make it through the year?
Yes, very quickly. So we get the funding late August, and this year, we are out early February. So the $15,000 runs out really quick, which is showing it's such an immense need in the community to have this program.
Well, great partnership with some of the auto repair places that are donating and reducing costs.
Yes, they've been great.
That's wonderful. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to address the council on the CDBG allocations? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution approving the use of 2015 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Committee.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, do that, too.
And I would move that we close the public hearing.
Great, and I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Aye.
Payment of claims. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second?
Yes, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye.
Ordinances and resolutions, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall from the February 3 council meeting, you were presented with and approved a first reading of a point-of-sale inspection ordinance, and to cut to the chase, we are asking you to take a vote tonight to rescind the approval of the first reading of that ordinance, basically undoing that vote, so it isn't a motion to table or rework. Our motion is to completely rescind the approval. And I will mention that in terms of some of the goals that had led to the formation of the recommendation for this program came out of the desire of the city and the city council to enhance the supply of safe and sanitary and adequate housing, to prevent the deterioration of our overall housing stock, and to protect the welfare and safety of our residents. And we have had, over the last 10, 15 years, programs that do just that, through our exterior maintenance code and our zoning codes, and within the last 10 years, our rental housing licensing and inspection programs as well. And with this program, the feeling is, with input from the real estate community and the Eden Prairie community at large, that this program is not something that has the support to move forward with and probably is not the best way, is not the best way to meet those goals at this time. And so I've, the fire chief would like to provide a brief report on some of that feedback that we've received and a little bit of input on the program, but the action tonight is to rescind the approval of that first reading. And staff is here, along with the building official, to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Espenson?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes. George is fine from you, that's great, so. So I appreciate your time, and so just to give you a little bit of history, as the city manager said, this, our drive to maintain a certain minimum standard within the city actually began back in the 90s when we did rental housing licensing, and then we moved to exterior maintenance in the early 2000s, and then in 2007, we moved to the rental housing inspection process, licensing and inspection, and then this, something revolving around point-of-sale was next, and then ultimately, maybe somewhere down the line, would be change of use for commercial buildings. So that's kind of the, was always the plan, and as the city manager said, we've gotten a lot of feedback since the first reading of the ordinance, and I know you've all been copied on that, and we've been trying to be very diligent in getting back to people and kind of straightening out some of the myths and whatnot, but be that as it may, it's obvious that, you know, this is not the right time, it's not the right vehicle. And we continue to work and reach out with the real estate community. We met with Lyndon Malquess and the folks at Edi Diner Realty a couple of weeks ago. This morning, even though we knew we were going to be rescinding this, we met with Linda Rogers and the folks at Caldwell Banker, and we continue to get good valuable input because I think the real estate community and us agree that we want to have this goal of maintaining the housing stock. It's, you know, obviously the devil's in the details, and maybe there's a good creative way somewhere down the line that we can do this in a way that maybe has never been done before and doesn't use point-of-sale or truth in housing and some of those lightning rod words, because we've gotten a lot of commentary about duplicity and expense and expansion of government, and we're sensitive to those things, and so we're working with Julia Parento from Minneapolis Area Association of Realtors and whatnot to try to find if there is some other possible something somewhere down the line. But we appreciate the exploration and apologize to you for creating such a, you know, a major to-do here, and that certainly wasn't our intention, and so we appreciate the time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Espenson? Chief Espenson, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Getchell, I just want to be clear because there was a reference made by somebody at open podium regarding two parts of the ordinance. Are we rescinding both parts of the ordinance? There's only one part of the ordinance, correct?
If I may, Madam Mayor, there's only one part of the ordinance. Perhaps the reference was to the fact that Eden Prairie has a two-step procedure to adopt an ordinance, a first reading and a second reading. You haven't held the second reading, so in order to rescind the action entirely, what's necessary is a motion and approval to rescind the first reading.
Okay.
And I would just add, Mayor and Council, that you have had, on many occasions, first readings of ordinances for projects or programs that do not ever come back for a second reading or still are, you know, in development, signed ordinance, Presbyterian Homes development, there are projects that have not come back ever or are still waiting to come back. I think the feeling with this was you did not need to take action, you simply could have not brought or not asked for us to bring back a second reading, but the feeling was that this is more of a statement with actually making this vote, but it's not necessary, it's a statement in terms of not moving forward with this program.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council, is there a motion?
I would move to rescind the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 9 by adding Section 9.17 relating to point-of-sale inspections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Case?
Yeah, I can either do it now or afterwards.
Oh, okay, sure.
Maybe take the vote now.
Okay.
Make a comment.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Mr. Case?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, after reading lots of emails over the last couple of weeks and quite a few more today, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out, but a lot of heartfelt, real, legitimate feelings and some really good perspectives, and I just felt the need to make a statement that not only our staff's intent, but the intent of this, and all five of us on the council, from the very first day and really back in the 90s when we started, trying to look at how do we protect the quality of this community, and how do we, how do we make sure that as we no longer are this new Eden Prairie from the 80s or 90s, but up in the 20s and 30s and maybe long after we're gone, our housing stock begins to be the age of communities that we worry about, you know, that you drive through, maybe not just around Minneapolis, but go around the country, and there are communities with housing stock that's 60, 70, 80 years old, and they've passed things like this. And we may feel like this pretty new community still, and if you're living in a brand-new development, you really sense that, but all of us up here on the council have campaigned probably more times than some people would want us to have campaigned, but a lot, we've wandered this city, and we know there are areas that are in great need. There are a couple that are really concerning to me, where a couple houses begin to be in decline and blight, and that begins to bring down the whole neighborhood. So, I mean, our intent all along was to do the very best for Eden Prairie and ultimately even for individual homeowners, because, I don't know how many houses are in a really bad state of repair right now, but it's got to be around a dozen. Some of them are in foreclosure currently, right in Eden Prairie today. You may know of one or two in your neighborhood. They may be in foreclosure, a bank may own them. And so all these, all these ideas of all this control and power that happens in the marketplace goes away under some of those circumstances. So our goal all along was to protect neighborhoods, and also, however, to constantly listen to our residents and business owners here in the city, and this may, this may be a little early, and I don't mean that like, hey, we're going to sneak something through next year. I mean, like, it's probably a decade early, but there comes a time, a decade from now, when our housing, right now, our housing stock is probably 30 to 35 years old, on average. That may sound strange to somebody that live in neighborhoods where the homes are under five, but our housing stock, on average, is 30 to 35 years old. So add a decade to that, we're 40 to 45 years old. Add 20 years that, that all of us with, you don't have gray hair, but with gray hair up, and you don't have hair, but with all of us, you know, that have been here, wow, 20 years goes like that. So in 20 years, our housing stock is 50 to 55 years old. So we were trying to do something that cities across this nation have done, not to get government into people's lives, but to do the opposite, to protect people, to have government stand on the side of people who have houses in their neighborhood that are bringing down their home value, because your home is the most important thing to you. So if your home value begins to decline, $10,000 or $20,000 because two or three homes in your neighborhood are falling into a state of disrepair, those people would be the first ones to come into the city council asking, begging, "Do something." Well, that's what we were trying to do, to proactively do something that would enhance and help protect the quality level of the home, housing stock in our city. If this wasn't the right time, and it's not the right way, we listened, we heard that, and we're responding. And we're not going to try to sneak something else in. It's not that at all. We care about the city, and we care about the housing stock. So maybe there's another way, and we're- So maybe there's another way, in working with realtors, that we can do what we need to do over the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years. We're not going to be here doing that, but we want to maybe proactively get something in place. So that, that was our goal, and I do believe if nothing ever gets passed decades from now, people will look back, and I think that will look like a mistake. But our intent was good, I think the issue and problem is still there. The private market doesn't always solve problems, that's why I believe, I believe in government, I believe in good government, I believe in good, strong government. So put me, you know, mark me, label me any way you want, but I believe in good, strong government that protects people, and that helps us with our quality of life. So that's what this intent was. I'm totally in favor of stepping back and looking at this over the next year, two years, three years, letting another council deal with it, I'm fine with that. I just think the issue is there, and hopefully, we can have, continue to have conversation about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very well said. The next item on the agenda is appointments. Last week, we met with applicants for our boards and commissions. Those of you that are here tonight that are students, keep your eyes open, because every year, we look for students that want to apply to be on our boards and commissions. So is that usually in the summer that we have that solicitation go out, Mr. Getchell?
That is, Mayor, summer into the fall, so we do, you're going to, the program, the program that we talk about in terms of commission members, it's a similar program available to students.
Okay, thank you. Does one of the council members want to start with the first appointment? We usually rotate around, we're down to three members tonight.
Brad, Ron, Ron, Brad, me, you might have to step in tonight.
I might have to, okay.
Brad, why don't you just start, and we'll go down the line.
All right, first one, I move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Amanda Anderson, Leanne Ashley, and Gina Gerard, with terms ending March 31st, 2018.
Do we want to do them all at once, and second them all?
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll appoint, okay, I'll move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission, Bob Barker, Kurt Shendel, and Joseph Satella, with terms ending March 31st, 2018, and Victoria Price, with a term ending March 31st, 2016.
And appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Tara Kahler, Stephen Olson, and Paul Thorpe, with terms ending March 31st, 2018.
And appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Sandra Filardo and Gregory Leeper, with terms ending March 31st, 2018.
And appoint to the Planning Commission Ed Farr and Travis Wetke, with terms ending March 31st, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item is the Board of Adjustments, or Board of Appeal and Equalization. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So when you discussed the appointments for commissions, you recently, just last Tuesday, you conducted interviews for those positions, and the recruitment process was through the early part of this year. So I think you should note that not every community actually goes through an interview process where the entire city council would interview all the applicants, and we did, in this case, of the commissions have more applicants than we did spaces. So I think it was you, Mayor, that mentioned to everybody that had applied, if they were not appointed to a commission, to come back next year and to reapply, and you can choose up to two commissions as well. When it comes to the Board of Appeal and Equalization, that is another commission of the council, it is, they're a group that's brought together that actually has real estate expertise in Eden Prairie, these are citizen volunteers that hear concerns and appeals and issues related to property valuations, and there are state laws subject to their training and their appointment. So we ask that you move to appoint two new members to that, Nate Thompson and Denise Kramer, for the current year to that commission, and we also have three other members, Lyndon Mulquess, Todd Walker, and Annette O'Connor, that make up that commission.
And that commission basically meets for about three months each year to deal with appeals?
That's correct, Mayor, it's over a period of three months, but it's typically, can be a total of just two meetings.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd move to appoint to the Board of Appeal and Equalization Nate Thompson and Denise Kramer for the period of March 1st, 2015, through May 31st, 2015, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we did a selection of board and commission chairs and vice chairs.
Uh, Mayor and council, that is pretty self-explanatory. You would, also, not only you're interviewing these folks, but in appointing them, you're also making appointments to chair and vice chairs of all these commissions.
Thank you.
And those are annual, so you make these appointments each year.
Okay. Is there a motion, or should we start with motions? You want to start?
Sure.
I would move to appoint Lyndon Mulquess Chair and Annette O'Connor Vice Chair of the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
I move to appoint Greg Olson Chair and Laura Jester Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission.
And to appoint Keith Scholl Chair and Carol Hanson Vice Chair of the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission.
And appoint Steve Olson Chair and Ed Muehlberg Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission.
Appoint Sandra Filardo Chair and PG Narjanen as Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
And appoint Larry Link Chair and Deborah McBride Vice Chair of the Parks Recreation and National Resources Commission.
And appoint John Stoltz Chair and John Kirk Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Report of council members, Councilmember Aho.
Yes, I just wanted to make a brief announcement. As many people know, I was diagnosed with multiple myeloma in August, and March is Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month, and they're just trying to make it aware, people aware that multiple myeloma affects a lot of people. In the year of 2015, we anticipate there'll be almost 27,000 people in the United States will be diagnosed, but that's about 1 in 243 people in the U.S., and it's the second-most diagnosed blood cancer here in the United States. So just to make everyone aware, March is Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month.
Great, thank you.
We're glad you're doing well with it, Brad.
We are.
Thank you.
We are, Brad. Councilmember Case?
Yeah, I had an issue come up this week, and I guess we all did, that illustrates a concern that I've had in the past with the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District rules. So we've had this conversation over the last year, and I don't know if this is like the first test case, it's probably one of the first of the larger test cases. So just to give the background real fast, we have that Green Acres Event Center that's up on Pioneer Trail, and we have been on board, as a council 5-0, very much supporting the expansion of parking, which required 14 government agencies to get involved with moving the Nert Pond, the Stormwater Drainage Pond, slightly filling one side in for parking and cutting into the north slope. One of them's owned, or governed by county, the others governed by MAC, it's just got messy, but we, as a city, really helped shepherd that through. Well, it's like, almost approved to the very end, they're ready to go, and then the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District slaps on an $89,000 bond. Granted, that's not money that necessarily has to be spent by the owners of the Green Acres, but nonetheless, they have to bond for it. And in some sense, there's duplicative things going on as part of the $89,000, there's some money that is questionable whether it would be returned, there's a 10% contingency fee for $6,000, there's a 30% administration cost for $30,000. In the big, big picture, that I'd really love to hear a little bit from our attorney, but also get possibly some staff thought, my understanding is that until we pass the rules in December, that the rules are not in effect yet. So I think this is pre-dating, or I think this is not, I want to see this not be there, because we, as a council, completely support the viability of this, of this operation, the barn, and regardless who owns it today, whoever owns it in 20 years, we want it to be viable, won't be viable without parking. We've done everything we can to get the county and MAC to get all these people to the table, and then along comes Riley Purgatory Water, Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District to throw this final wrench in. It's upsetting to me, this is exactly what I feared might happen from an unelected body with rules that were not completely, I don't know that yet, were totally engaged with or supporting. So I don't, I don't know what I want out tonight, well, I'll tell you what I want. I would, I would like to think, as a council, we could somehow direct staff to make this work. I don't know if that makes it go away, if it makes it, because I don't believe the rules are binding, or yet, and therefore, this, this expense isn't binding. The thought that occurred to me right away, and I've run this by Mr. Getchell, is what would have happened six months ago? I mean, the city, this would have happened, the city would have been involved, the silt fence would have been, you know, in place, I mean, there just wouldn't have been all these tacked-on charges. So if anyone's like upset about the potential of the implementation of these rules, this is living proof, and that, that bothers me bigger than this. But I want this not to be here. So I don't know what you two think, and I don't know if we want to get some thoughts from staff, and where we can go with this.
Yeah. Mr. Russell, your thoughts?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this packet of information has sat on my desk since August, putting it together, and I've never wanted to remove it from the desk, because I thought perhaps the issue would come back up.
Here it is.
And here it is. I removed it from my desk on Saturday, because the office is moving, and I retrieved it this afternoon. But you will recall that in September, we did an opinion memorandum for you about the whether the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District has the authority to promulgate rules concerning the use of water and land development within the district. And our conclusion was that what the statutes provide is that a watershed district that's wholly located within the metropolitan area, and this watershed district is, may directly regulate the use and development of land in the watershed, only if, and then there are three criteria, and they're, it ends with an or, so it's not all, it's, you know, only if. First one is, the local government does not have a properly approved and adopted local water management plan, or has not adopted the implementation program described in the plan. Well, we have a properly approved and adopted local water management plan, and have adopted controls with respect to that plan. I asked Mr. Ellis that question even tonight, just to confirm once again that we have a properly approved plan. The other two criteria do not apply, that an application for a local permit requires the variance or amendment from our plan, or the local government has authorized the watershed district to require permits. Those two don't apply. So then, we're looking at a situation where we have an approved plan, and the watershed district has adopted a new plan, and they did that back a while ago, and then in December, they adopted rules. Well, the city has a period of time from the adoption of their amended plan to adopt a new plan, which we are in the process of preparing, and then to submit it to the watershed district for their review and comment, as well as to the Metropolitan Council. So it's my opinion that until the new plan is timely submitted and reviewed, that the watershed district does not have the authority to implement its rules in Eden Prairie. And at such time as we submit a plan that is compliant, and we adopt the appropriate amendments to our local controls, then we will still have a plan that is approved, and the watershed district rules would not apply within the city. I think the statute is very clear about that. When I drafted this memo back in September, two days later, the attorney for the watershed district responded, and on September 16th, I believe that was a council meeting evening, and provided the memorandum to me before I left the office to come here, and his comment was, and I told you that this that night, that in summary, we find the city attorney and the district council are in essential agreement on the district's authority to adopt rules as currently proposed. And then he goes on, the rest of the three or four-page letter is to disagree with a statement I made about whether their amendment in 2013 was major or minor, which does not come into play with respect to this issue. So I find that, one, my opinion, I was asked today whether my opinion had changed, my opinion has not changed, and I believe that the district council and I are on the same page as he described, that these are the rules under which we must operate and under which they must operate. In terms of what next, I think we ought to communicate that to the, to the district. I'd like an opportunity to discuss strategy and procedure with Mr. Getchell, in terms of how to go about doing that, and I understand the concerns of the property owner with respect, that you raised, with respect to the fees, and of course, as I've advised the council and the staff over the years, you're, by law, we're required to have our fees bear a nexus to the costs that we incur in administering a program that requires a permit. So we can't charge a percentage of a, of a project cost as the fee for the project, unless that percentage bears a relationship to our actual expense in providing the service. Issuance of permit fees is not a money-making venture, it's to reimburse us for our costs and overhead. So that's another area that perhaps we can just have some good discussion with the district about, about how they arrive at those, but I think the first point is to reiterate our position to them, and see where that takes us.
So I'm just curious, if we reiterate our position to them, and they hold firm on their interpretation of things, what do we tell Mr. Schuslers?
Is that leave our?
Is he in limbo?
Um, I don't want to announce strategy that Mr. Schusler might venture to undertake.
Okay.
But I could think of some things that I could advise the city manager, if that came to be, actions that perhaps the city would want to take proactively. There'd be some cost to that, and so we'd want to talk about that, but as a city, we have an interest in ensuring that our rules are the ones that are in place, and that we're acting under law, and if another agency is doing something that we believe is not acting in accordance with law, that there are remedies available outside of having a friendly conversation with them and trying to reach agreement, you know, the courts would be one opportunity. That said, I think that's a long ways down the line. Their attorney came up to me at the end of that meeting on the 16th and said, he addressed me as Rick, he said, "Rick, we always work these things out," he said, you know, "and I am confident we will work this out." So I'll hold him to that.
Okay. Mr. Case?
Could I just, even with nods, or just get response in some way from the two of you, and then I want to address it then to Mr. Getchell, but would it be appropriate, I'm asking Mr. Russell as well, for us to reach out as, because the Green Acres operation is a constituent of ours, a business constituent, would it be appropriate to reach out and just let them know what we're doing, or what we believe, or what we, you know, just that he's not alone, or that that group is not alone, because we're publicly citing, in essence, it sounds like with their position, would that be okay with the two of, three of us?
Reach out to whom?
To probably Mr. Schusler, but, or his representative, or his attorney, I don't know what, I mean, to that operation, but because they're concerned, obviously, and they've gotten a little bit of a response informally back that, hey, kind of the rules are the rules, and I think you're on your own, I don't think they're on their own, I think we're with them, and I'd like that, that overture to be made to him, to say that, you know, here's what's going on, here's our perspective, here's where we might be able to help you here, whatever, I don't know, but would that be appropriate?
Well, I think, as Mr. Russell stated, I think it's very important for the city to assert our, our beliefs, that, you know, that the city is in control over development in our, in our city, and not another agency, especially when we're following the law. And so I think that's important for us to communicate that to everyone.
I mean, I want to be really clear that I, and every one of us on the council, care about wetlands, care about water quality, I mean, absolutely. What, what this isn't permitting, to me, is that understanding of every situation's unique, and this isn't a brand-new development project where they're going into wetlands and building, you know, Nert ponds, this is- you know, NERC ponds, this is a redo that's a fairly small scale, that suddenly is being slapped with at the 11th hour or 59th minute, $89,000 bonding for things that I think the city is going to already do. I think this is duplicitous, superfluous, what other words?
Redundant.
Redundant. So I, yeah, so I'd like for our, someone in our city that we care about, as we would any of our residents, this not to be an encumbrance for this project, so.
So Councilmember Case, council, you know, myself, city attorney, public works director, if necessary, we will be in contact with Green Acres and with the Riley Purgatory Watershed. We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.